Hello, everybody. I am honored to bring to order this first ever meeting of the Corte Madera Special Town Council meeting. I think our actual fourth meeting for tonight, but first night in our brand-new town hall, which feels really wonderful and really nice to have some guests here as well. So we'll begin with a roll call.
Councilmember Casisa?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ravazio?
Here.
Mayor Beckman is absent from this meeting.
Now, we have open time for public comment. Anyone may address the council on any item not on the council's agenda tonight. Limited to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the council? Welcome.
Good. Thank you. My name is John Ross. I wrote a letter, which I believe is in your materials regarding remodeling I've done to my house. I don't want to read the letter because I'm assuming you have a copy and you're going to read.
I did read it.
You have read it, yes. So the issue I have is about, I added 100 square feet to my house. The building department won't issue a permit, finish the project because the fire department is saying I substantially changed the dimensions of my house by more than 55%. Something's wrong here. The building department said I added 100 square feet. That's 74%. It's bored in the rooms. Same. Volume of the rooms is the same, except the kitchen where I added 100 square feet. I don't know what to do, but I think that you guys might have seen this before. I know how the system works. I've been here 44 years. I intend to stay in my house another 44 years. You know, I'm here. But it's a big financial burden, taking me 30 years, passing the two wives, to get to the point where I can finish this project. And now I'm, I feel like I'm pushing uphill. Had conversations with the fire department, and they say, the fire chief says the calculations are right. That's not very... But I'm asking for help. You guys come up with ideas. I don't even know what you can do.
Okay, thank you. You know, we aren't really allowed to address your questions here in conference at this time, but there will be follow-up. Is there a chance that the staff can, will you say something now or after all the comments? Okay. Any other public comments from?
I would mention, Mr. Wolf and I, we had a meeting.
Oh, good.
This is not new.
Well, he's your man.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone online or?
We do not have hands raised online. We did receive public comment for open time after the agenda publication, and that was uploaded to the website and shared with council earlier today, and is available for the public to view as well. And we don't have any additional email public comment for open time.
All right. Thank you. Then we can move on to presentations.
If I may, I'll just...
Would you like to? Oh, go ahead. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, this is, Mr. Ross and I, we did meet regarding this issue, and this is one of those cases that I understand could be frustrating sometimes where you're, you sort of have an individual who is, you know, is seeking some assistance in something, a way of doing things a little bit differently. And on the other side, as a regulatory body, we try and strive very strongly to put the rules in place and apply them, that's the word I was looking for, apply them in a fair and equal manner to all residents throughout the town and under the jurisdiction, in the jurisdiction. So when the fire chief and Ruben says, you know, I've done a double, you know, taken a second look and a third look, and this is how we apply the rules. And I know it may sound like it's a challenging situation for you, but that's how we apply the rules. I did ask Ruben to, fire chief to take a meeting with John and just have a personal one-on-one discussion so that he can ask, explain how in detail those calculations are done. And my understanding, they are consistent throughout the county. That's what they've tried to do in that way. But nonetheless, I think it's important to have that meeting. So that's would be a next step in my...
Okay. Thank you. Right, next up, we have a presentation of the Shoreline Adaptation Engagement Effort and an introduction of the Shoreline Flood Explorer Corte Madera video. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I not close public comment? I thought I did. I thought we closed public comment and then heard from staff. Yeah, we did.
Yes. I believe we did.
And just a quick introduction to this one. I think I mentioned this in my report at the last meeting, and so really just wanted Phoebe to come. Phoebe Golden, our Climate Adaptation and Action Coordinator over here. Far away, it feels like, compared to how we used to sit next to staff, and I could talk and whisper in their ears. So we'll have to get used to that. But Phoebe and RJ, we have a great team actually assembled. A lot of our top staff really trying to assemble this and conduct the outreach effort on the vulnerabilities and risks related to flooding on the base side of town. And so I thought it was a really opportune time to show one of the sort of, one of the highlights, I guess, of that, this entire process, which is a professional presentation. I'll hand it over to Phoebe to talk about it further. But we will, we hope everyone stays and gets to see this and the word spreads to take a look, because I think it's an important tool for our community to visualize flooding.
Thank you, Adam, and good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Adam gave the introduction already, but excited to be able to present this update and share this video with you this evening. So next slide, please. As Adam mentioned, we have a really cross-departmental team working on this project. We also have some excellent consultant support from the team at Planta Place, who you might remember from the town's housing element outreach. Next slide, please. And the goals of this effort really to provide shoreline residents and other stakeholders, like business owners, with updated information about flood risks in that area, and provide everyone who's impacted by those flood risks the opportunity to share their ideas, their concerns, their needs with town staff and leaders. And then really, the goal here that we're moving towards now is developing a community vision for what the next step should be and deciding as a community on what those next steps should be to address shoreline flood risks moving forward. So this is the area that we're focusing on for this engagement effort. It's roughly aligned with the FEMA 100-year floodplain in this area of town. Includes Marina Village, Mariner Cove, a portion of Marina Estates, and some commercial areas, commercial properties in that area. And this area is, was identified as a priority due to its low elevation. It's in the floodplain, and some of the areas are already experiencing flooding impacts. It was also identified as a key next step in the Corte Madera Climate Adaptation Assessment to reengage with these neighborhoods. And that effort was completed in 2021. Next slide. So really building on a body of previous work with this effort, including the Corte Madera Adaptation Assessment, which, as I mentioned, was completed in 2021, but was a multi-year process of engagement and studies to get to that point. There's also been work done countywide on sea level rise vulnerability assessments, as well as some more local work, like the Marina Village Levy Study and our Storm Drain Master Plan. So all of that is sort of feeding into this effort today. And so this is looking at the timeline for this project. We sort of picked it up in fall, picked up from the Climate Adaptation Assessment in fall 2023. We've had a couple events so far focused on sharing information and listening to feedback from residents. So we kicked off with some small stakeholder conversations to listen to, get feedback on our messaging and materials as we were developing those and hear what worked, what didn't during the adaptation assessment engagement, so we can improve the engagement this time around. We've also held a floodboard meeting sort of to launch the project back in December. We then had some king tide pop-ups in January, one in Marina Village, one in Mariner Cove, to go out there in the neighborhood and see what the, what it looks like during one of the highest tides of the year. And then following those pop-ups, we had two virtual workshops, one focused on flood vulnerabilities in Mariner Cove and one focused on flood vulnerabilities in Marina Village. So now we're moving towards a community-wide survey. You can go back a slide, actually, Marina. Thank you. And that will be sent out in the next couple of weeks to sort of understand the community's level of concern and the level of support for next steps. And if there is next steps, or if there is support, the next step would be further evaluation of a near-term flood barrier project, which would include additional public outreach, community engagement, and opportunities for feedback as part of that process, but also starting to look at some of the specifics around preliminary design, engineering, environmental analysis. So we will be sending out a mailed survey to the entire engagement area towards end of May, and then we'll be bringing all the feedback that we hear from that survey, as well as from the events we've held, to town council for a discussion likely in July or August. So skip two slides forward. So this is another mechanism we've developed for feedback as part of this process, and this is going to be ongoing even after this engagement effort ends. We have this tool on our project website, cortemaderadaps.org/shoreline, which allows community members to share their experiences and their feedback related to flooding with the town. The next slide, please. So this is an example of what one person, one resident posted on the map. And when you go to the website, you can sort of drag a pin from the top bar to a specific location on the map where you've experienced flooding or want to share something about flooding. So for example, this resident who's at Golden Hind Passage and Pacific Queen Passage, shared this image of flooding during a high tide and rain event. So the high tide was preventing the storm water from running out into the bay and causing the street to flood. And this kind of information is really helpful for town staff to understand where flooding is occurring and under what conditions. We really encourage residents to check this tool out on our website and contribute and share experiences. So we really appreciate everyone who's participated in this effort so far and the feedback that we've received. We also know that we haven't reached the whole community. So our goal with creating the video that we're about to share is to be able to share the information about flood vulnerabilities with the broader community and have it in a easy-to-share, hopefully easy-to-digest format. It's about a six-minute video. So our goal is to create a baseline understanding of these vulnerabilities before we launch that survey going out to all residents to get feedback. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with the video.
How could this go in?
Welcome to Corte Madera, a community of about 10,000 people nestled between beautiful Mount Amalpais and the San Francisco Bay. The town is surrounded by marshes, vital ecosystems which support local flora and fauna, and provide protection to shoreline neighborhoods by reducing wave impacts. Corte Madera was originally home to the Coast Miwok people, who have been stewards of the land for thousands of years. The town was incorporated in 1916 and grew rapidly after World War II, with multiple new residential subdivisions created by filling in marshlands. Due to their construction over bay mud, these neighborhoods have subsided two to four feet since construction and are continuing to sink as the weight of earth fill, roads, and homes compresses the bay mud and former marsh solids. This low-lying area is vulnerable to flooding due to multiple causes. King tides, the highest tides of the year, often cause streets and backyards to flood in the Mariner Cove neighborhood. Heavy rain events also contribute to flooding, especially when they occur at the same time as high tides, which can prevent storm water from draining to the bay. Over time, land subsidence, also called settlement, and sea level rise are increasing the flood risk that these neighborhoods face. If no action is taken, shoreline neighborhoods such as Mariner Cove and Marina Village will be increasingly vulnerable to flooding over time. This is a 3D model of Corte Madera's shoreline neighborhoods. Here you can see the Mariner Cove and Marina Village neighborhoods, which are separated by San Clemente Creek. You can also see Paradise Shopping Center and the Cove Elementary School. US Highway 101 runs to the west. There are over 500 homes in these neighborhoods. Here's the area that a 100-year flood could cover today. This kind of flood has a 1% chance of happening every year, or a 26% chance during a 30-year mortgage. However, with king tides already flooding some streets, even smaller storms combined with high tides, subsidence, and/or sea level rise could have serious impacts in these neighborhoods. Let's go to a bird's eye view to understand what this means. From this view, you can see Marina Village, which is currently protected by previously constructed flood berms. The lowest known berm elevation is 8.3 feet, while many of the streets and properties behind the berms, including portions of Highway 101, are at six feet or lower elevation, putting them at risk of flooding if the berms fail or are overtopped. At king tides today, the marshes to the north of Marina Village are filled with water, but the existing berms prevent this water from flowing into the neighborhood. However, if a 20-year storm surge were to occur during a king tide, the berms overtop, causing the entire area to flood and impacting dozens of homes and businesses, as well as local and regional roads, even low areas of Highway 101 would be underwater. Marina Village is vulnerable to this level of flooding today, and the risk is predicted to increase as severe storms and higher tides become more frequent due to our changing climate. Now let's take a look at the Mariner Cove neighborhood. From this view, you can see Mariner Cove and the Cove Elementary School. The Mariner Cove neighborhood sits several feet higher in elevation than Marina Village, and most homes and streets in this area range from eight to 11 feet in elevation. Lower elevations are present along the waterfront, including at the sanitary sewer pump station, which is 7.2 feet in elevation at its concrete base. King tides already impact the neighborhood, flooding some streets every year. The water level that we see during a king tide today could become a daily occurrence with 1.6 feet of relative sea level rise. An 20-year storm surge event on top of a king tide increases flooding on Golden Hind Passage and nearby streets. A 100-year storm surge would result in even more flooding in the area. So what can we do to protect Corte Madera's shoreline from these scenarios? Let's explore some adaptation strategies. Elevating homes can limit property damage from intermittent flooding that may occur in these neighborhoods. This adaptation strategy is already happening in Mariner Cove and Marina Village, usually during major renovations of existing residences. Upgrading our storm drain infrastructure is an adaptation strategy that can help mitigate flooding by efficiently carrying stormwater runoff out of these neighborhoods. Upgrades and improvements are being studied by the town as part of the Storm Drain Master Plan update. Another adaptation strategy could involve boosting our existing flood defenses, like reinforcing and raising the existing flood berm that shields Marina Village. The town is committed to working with residents and other stakeholders impacted by flooding to develop a community vision for shoreline adaptation. Starting in fall 2023, the town initiated a community engagement project called the Shoreline Adaptation Engagement Effort, to provide information about current and future flood vulnerabilities and listen to the ideas, hopes, concerns, and needs of all shoreline residents and stakeholders. Join us to work together to build a resilient and sustainable future for our community. Visit our website to learn more and get involved. Thank you for watching the Shoreline Flood Explorer Corte Madera.
All right. Well, it runs a little bit smoother when it's not shared over Zoom, but yes, please share this. We're encouraging everyone to share it with a neighbor, get the word out. We will also be including a QR code to the video on the survey when it's mailed out. So we encourage everyone to watch it before taking the survey. And there's also going to be an interactive web version of the video that will allow residents to explore those flood scenarios that are shown in more detail and be able to pan around as a 360 image to be able to see it in more detail.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions or?
No, just a quick comment. Thanks for the great presentation, by the way, and really good job with the 3D modeling, because I think that, when you get that visual, it really brings everything to home. So great job on everything so far. Thanks.
I just want to say it's really well done, and I think it really will be helpful for people to have a, an idea of, you know, what the situation can be, because I think sometimes it's kind of hard for people to imagine. So yeah, great job.
And I also just wanted to add, what I really appreciate about it isn't just about the local people, but as we've discussed before with this, the funding mechanisms and the result of impacts on regional infrastructure, other systems, right? Not that the individual residents aren't the key thing, but everybody, they all understand what the flooding impacts are, because they would deal, they've dealt with it already. They, they know what they want and how they want to live with the solutions. But I think that's a really good one to go tell Caltrans and regional funding sources for, you know, the corridor that is the second means of egress out of Tiburon, to understand why these are more critically funded regional projects than just individual homeownership, right? And I think that that video, there's some of that embedded in it, and that kind of illustration made it very clear and professional as something to alert others outside and inside of our community. So I really appreciate it. Yeah, if I can, I just, I think that's a really good point, Councilmember Lee, just because at the end of the day, this is going to need other funds to actually solve. And this type of tool, it's, you know, felt, and RJ really was the one, this was done in Stinson Beach, but felt it could be a really valuable tool and resource, not only for our community to visualize, but as we go out, it's going to communicate really quickly and easily what the issues are in our town. And then ultimately, that will help us communicate to those with not only funds, but also regulatory authority over seeing these problems.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, we go to the consent calendar. Item number four.
All right, we didn't take public comment on the presentation.
It's okay. Is there any public comment on the, on the video or the presentation by Phoebe? Either in the room or online?
We don't have anyone online with wanting to comment on this item.
Okay. So then we will move on, if that's okay, to the consent calendar. These are items that have been combined, which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They'll be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, town staff, or the public may request removal of an item for discussion. Is there any item that needs to be removed for discussion?
Town council?
What about public, staff, anybody? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve then?
Okay, make a motion to approve consent items 4A through 4F.
A second?
Oh, sorry. Second.
It's all right.
Okay. Councilmember Casisa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay, next. And then, thank you very much. We have a public hearing coming up next. This is the first reading and possible introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 2.06, Boards and Commissions of Title II, Administration and Personnel of the Corte Madera Municipal Code by amending Sections 2.06020, 2.06030, 2.06050, and 2.06090, to allow the council to create standing committees to set the term of a youth member on the Parks and Recreation Commission at one year, to clarify that boards and commissions must establish an annual meeting schedule and make other minor changes to conform to state law. I guess we should begin there with a staff report?
Yes. Thank you, Vice Mayor Ravazio. Thank you, council. I'll be presenting the staff report on this item, and this is basically tied to the previous staff report from the Parks and Recreation Commission interviews. So the mission of the town of Corte Madera is to enhance our community's health, safety, and quality of life by serving our residents and businesses through proactive, responsive, and inclusive leadership. Having, and I want to focus on those words, inclusive leadership, having more participation from diverse groups of people in our community, including youth, should be a part of that inclusive leadership. And currently in town, most advisory bodies lack the voice and perspective of our younger generation. So in the process of encouraging youth to make a real impact and contribute to meaningful decisions that affect our town, the question about youth serving as appointed members on our advisory bodies arose. Currently, the municipal code designates a seat for someone under the age of 18, but only for the Parks and Recreation Commission and not other committees or boards. And for the Parks and Recreation Commission specifically, historical records reflect there's been a lack of participation from youth on the commission. So when we were looking at that, staff thought that maybe changing the term length of youth members from two years to one year might encourage youth members to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission. And that's why that was mentioned earlier today as well. There's also interest from youth and other advisory bodies. I know people have reached out regarding B-PAC. Specifically, the Climate Action Committee has been actively leading the effort to increase youth involvement. Phoebe's been a big part of that. And they've developed a student ambassador program that engages high school students in the work of the Climate Action Committee. In order to ensure that youth have a voice in the community and also that they feel respected and valued, we thought that staff thought that the best approach would be to give youth the opportunity to apply for an official position on the town's committees, in addition to the already designated position for Parks and Recreation Commission, and then to also have that position be fully participatory with the power to vote and not just as an advisory kind of side position, in a way. The goal of creating more participation from youth on the town's advisory bodies, with that goal, staff took the opportunity to review Chapter 2.06, and then we saw there were other minor changes and amendments that were also necessary to make in order to conform to current state law and practices. So the draft ordinance before you includes some deletions and amendments to different sections of Title II and Chapter 2.06. And if introduced today, we'd bring that ordinance back for possible adoption at the next regular meeting. And then at that meeting, we'd also bring in a resolution to propose changes to the membership requirements of the Climate Action Committee to include a youth member. membership requirements of the Climate Action Committee to include a youth member, if that is something you would support. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Did the opposite, it wasn't on, thank you. So it would be the climate, for the Climate Action Committee and the Parks and Rec, and which, which other committees?
We've had interest in other committees, but if, if we were to change membership to allow youth on the different committees that we have, that would be done through a resolution individually for those committees.
All right, so this would only affect Climate Action and Parks and Rec. So?
So, so we have boards and commissions that are created by ordinance, and that's our Planning Commission, our Parks and Recreation Committee, and our Flood Control Committee. And they're subject to these provisions. We've had in the code temporary committees, but it really isn't reflective of the fact that they are standing committees. So Climate Action, B-PAC.
And sales tax.
Now, this, well, sales taxes actually create, sales taxes are, I think, created by the voter initiative, so I consider that created by ordinance. So by cleaning up the temporary committee into standing committee, those qualifications don't apply to those. So, but we would come back with, and we'll come back at the next meeting. We could have done it this meeting, but we just decided to do it on second reading. So there will be a designated youth seat on Climate Action. And then if it's of interest to the council, we could do a designated seat on B-PAC as well. But the, today, we're changing the term limits for the youth member of Rec and Parks and Rec to one year, because I think two-year term is really hard for, you know, young people in high school. And then we're also just doing the cleanup on some of the other provisions. And I'd just add, if, you know, council had, you know, mentioned earlier about possibility of term limits, that's something we could add in to this ordinance, if that's something council would want.
But not, we wouldn't do that tonight, though.
Well, we could.
We could.
Yeah. So, and then, because it's introduction, we can make changes. So, anyway, that.
Greg?
Yeah, if we get no interest in the youth commissioner, what happens? It just stays vacant? Does that mean there's essentially one short on Park and Rec Commission?
Correct. So initially, when we had this discussion, staff thought that, because these are advisory bodies, that we'd have the six or however many positions filled. And then if there wasn't a vacant, if there wasn't a youth applicant to fill that position, it would remain vacant. But when it comes to recommendations to the council, we also discussed that when presenting information to council, we'd bring in the complete discussion of what both sides discuss at their meetings that would lead to not having a, an actual recommendation to council due to not having that additional seat that would be able to break a tie.
I guess another question is, because I know when I was on Park and Rec, we always had a hard time recruiting youths. If we get youth that does not apply, can we fill that with anybody else? Because to me, it doesn't make sense to leave that position open. If not, this is again with caveat that we don't have any youth applying, why leave it vacant?
If I, if I can jump in here, so I think the challenge with anybody else applying that we've had in the past was that you then have a youth seat that's filled by a, somebody with a longer term or an adult, put it that way, and you end up not getting an opening. So we could always, for a youth member, ultimately. I think what we would try to do during the course of that one year would continually to reach out and try to fill it, you know, probably not like on a weekly basis, but over, you know, on a quarterly basis throughout that year to fill it. I, in staff's view, and in my view, I don't, I'm not concerned really with, these are advisory bodies. So six members, seven members, five members, a lot of our committees are established where they can have between five and seven. Whether you, whether you have one less than seven, it's not, doesn't necessarily affect, and sometimes it can actually help sort of the discussion to a certain extent. I think we'd rather leave the, that vacancy available so that youth members always know that it's there if it's not filled. And the rare situation where you have sort of a, if you had seven members, you have a four-three vote or on a recommendation to the council, or maybe it ends up being three-three. It's not like the four-three vote carries the day when we bring that recommendation to the town council. We were always, I think Lorraine alluded to, staff would always then make note that it's a really a split vote, and you have three members that are voicing this opinion, four members voicing this opinion. In the instance where you didn't have a youth member and you had a three-three vote, you just, that would be the recommendation carried forward to the council to review. I think staff would recommend we leave that seat, you know, vacant for youth and just continually try to get a youth member to apply and, and then bring that forward.
So under that scenario, does that mean that one-year term is variable? Or is it fixed? Is the one-year term fixed from like July 1st?
Yes.
To June 30th?
So you could do partial.
You could have a youth that comes to us in May of that year saying, I want to be on there, and they're only on there for, for a month.
Well, it doesn't mean it has to appoint them too, but.
What's that?
They can reapply. They wouldn't have to be appointed at that time.
We could make them wait until.
Let's say six months, right? Like, and so my, the other thing is procedurally, if, if there's two or three candidates, we will have to interview them the same as any other position and choose one. But if no one does it during the open enrollment time, and someone chooses to do it after the fact, leaving it unfilled, can they just be a point, like, do we, do they actually need council vetting to make it onto the recommendation? Or if it's really about including any children, right? Like, that they can, because they're volunteer and no one else has stepped forward? Like, what's the bare process, Amy?
The council does appoint, so they would come to the council meeting.
They have to appoint, but it could be a matter of consent, or like.
It certainly, yeah, we do, I think we had on the consent calendar, reappointments. When there's no, we interview when there's more applicants than seats.
Right. So, and, and, right, like, so the quorum discussion is really in the pseudo judiciary Brown Act regulated planning commission and that, we can't, we have to have adults that make the decisions, and you have to have a true quorum, but the advisories aren't under that same.
They are subject to the Brown Act. And so, yes, all, all formally created bodies are subject to the Brown Act, so they do. And so they do, they, they do need a quorum to meet. But, you know, if you, so yeah, I mean, if, if you're leaving a seat vacant, then you still, you still have to have four, if it's going to be a seven-member commission, you've got to have four commissioners present.
Got it, okay. The other question is, do they actually have to be, so they're not like voting yet, so part of it is, is do they have to be from Corte Madera? Because what is the role of the advisory committee? Is it a town body? Do we want youth to participate? Because we also share a lot with Twin Cities and others, right? Like, as long as they're in the school district, like Redwood, or like, can, and, you know, a lot of the parks and youth facilities and everything are used by large for as much as Corte Madera? Like, what's the bound, how do we set what these youth commissioner would be?
They, the boards and commissions have to be electors, which means you're a resident of the town, and you're old enough to vote. Now, the exception is a youth member, but you still have to be a resident of the town. It is a town serving.
But, yeah, I mean, even if they could qualify to use the facilities.
I just have one question to increase the pool of candidates. Is it possible to go to age 21 rather than 18? So that we get kind of the kids who don't necessarily go away to college but want to be really involved in the community, do we give them a chance? Or does it really have to be 18?
18 is for the adults, right? It's what's, it can be younger than 18 for the youth.
Correct. So the youth position would be for individuals under the age of 18. And if you're older than 18, like 21, then you would just apply for a regular position.
Regular council position. What about between the ages of 18 and 21?
You're, over the age of 18, you're an adult, and you're an elector.
Okay, so.
So you're qualified as an adult.
They could still be encouraged to apply, but it would just be for a regular seat.
Right.
Okay, so do we need to take action on this item?
We do.
And then, I think that.
And have we opened it up? Well, there's no public here. Is there anybody online? Oh, sorry.
Just back to Amy, I do have a clarifying question to your, if we wanted to add B-PAC, we would actually have to nominate and discuss inclusion in that, because it's not currently one of the ones for the youth commissioner being discussed right now as the first reading stands.
Right, so B-PAC is created by resolution, so it's, it's not an ordinance body. So if you look at Section 2.06.030, those are committees, and the council can create them by resolution. They, to date, have been temporary committees, and we're making the change to reflect that essentially B-PAC is a standing committee. So yes, we could come back to you with a resolution amending the membership of B-PAC to allow for a youth seat.
Is that the only one that's going to be changed to a standing committee that doesn't, isn't already included as adding a youth?
Well, Climate Adaptation, but we already are coming back with that. And I don't think there's any other committees of which we would add a youth member.
Yeah.
I think it would be those two.
I think adding B-PAC is a good consideration, especially with the advent of e-bikes and everything, to get somebody from that world.
Yes.
I have a question on the B-PAC part. Does that mean we would be adding to that committee? Or are we leaving it the way it is now? And then, pardon?
One of the seats.
I don't know how many seats are on it.
It's seven there, so one of the seats, one of the seven seats would be a youth member seat.
And was there any consideration on Park and Rec to leave it at the seven for adults and add one for youth?
What, I don't know if we.
I think it was this same kind of, related to the comments that Adam was making where, you know, you'd want to have an odd number of individuals, and we want that youth member to be part of that either five or seven group of people and not have eight people, where you might have a instance where you might have a tie vote or something like that.
But if you have a tie vote, it'd be the same thing that you talked about.
I would just say eight's probably, it starts to get unwieldy and a lot of.
I mean, look, there's only seven seats right here.
Seven chairs up here.
It should be based upon chairs. How many are on Climate Action, do you know?
Phoebe, how many do we have on Climate Action right now? Seven?
Seven, and it's also five to seven.
I think anything beyond that gets a little unwieldy to go to eight. I just think it's a lot of people. And I, that needs to be heard.
We want that youth vote to actually have some power. And if you have, if, if you have an uneven number, then I think they can be easily overpowered. So I think, you know.
It's consistency, I think, with the other as well, strive for.
Any more discussion? Is there a motion to?
I think that was questioning, right? Have we done public comment?
Yeah, so now we take public comment. So there is no, there are no hands raised on Zoom, and we didn't receive emailed, actually, we did receive an emailed public comment, which I uploaded to the website, shared with council, and is available for the public to view.
Regarding this issue?
Yes, it was in support of.
In support?
Yes, I'm happy to read it if you'd like.
Not necessary, yes.
I have one other quick question. Do you know how many members are on B-PAC?
It's like five right now, I think it's small.
At this time, we have five, five people on B-PAC.
Or is there consistency across all our boards or commissions saying it's between five to seven? So we get some kind of consistency?
I think so. I mean, not, planning commission's its own separate thing, so they're, they're separate from that. But I think the other committees are between five and seven.
Okay, just something, just again, for consistency.
Anything else?
Also, like, for consistency is, is it between five and seven depending on applicants? Or per standing committee, we decide whether it's five or seven? Five, six, or seven. I mean, frankly, it's, it's really, it's up to the town council to determine qualified applicants at the time that we have applicants coming before the town council to serve on those committees. And it, we have to have five, but can it go up to seven? And if we put this. Right, but there's no cap at five on some of them. It's that they can expand from, for, we can limit it to five if we don't feel like they're good candidates or whatever, right? Like, we can reject them and say, sorry, only five, not six, not seven. Okay, got it.
And we always advertise it to be up to the seven. So, yeah, okay.
Okay, can we move on and have a motion here to approve this direction and including the B-PAC? Do we want to include the B-PAC?
I would like to include B-PAC.
Everyone agreeing on that?
Yes.
Go ahead. It's not, we're not doing B-PAC. I mean, we heard you in terms of the direction you want.
That's all.
We'd have to come back with a resolution on that.
Understand that.
And, and then also, the, I, I think that probably the term limits should be a separate discussion, not tonight, but maybe.
Yes, I agree, not tonight. We should talk about.
And I would like a little public, like, I think, public feedback on that before we as a council make a decision.
Somehow make that a public hearing about.
You know, some people like, might want the consistency and long-term kind of dedication and know-how on some of those, so I think we should have a broader discussion.
And what about the council?
Yeah, that's why I should come back.
What about the council? I mean, if we're going to include the committee, should we talk about the council?
That sounds like, is that, like, is that regulated, the state? Is that, is that decided by the town, or is that decided by the state or some other?
I think we're getting off to new challenges.
No, I know, but.
Yeah, can we, can we finish one first?
I mean, the state.
I have to go back and, and take a look. My, I think it's probably state law, and I don't know that council could impose it, but I could do a little more research and report back. Yeah, as a general law city, it's probably going to be state law.
Yeah, because it's elected, not appointed, so.
Okay.
All right, so I can make a motion to introduce the ordinance as requested, and also ask for that comeback.
Our second?
I think I heard Councilmember Casissa first. Okay, so Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Okay, we have no business items, and that brings us to council reports. Does the town manager have anything?
Let me just start by saying congratulations, well done, on our first meeting in this new building. So thanks for bearing with us as we really were trying to get literally all day prepared for this meeting. And thanks to RJ and Bob Alton and Alton Construction and everything that they went through, we passed our elevator inspection this morning, so things, you know, it was, obviously, we have some kinks to work out, but I just view this as really a test run, and we're all seeing how this room operates with an actual meeting in the evening, and you see light coming in a certain direction, you have a podium, you know, so we're seeing things. Please give feedback, you know, to staff as you sort of use the dais and notice things and how we can improve, because it's, it's going to evolve over time.
Because it's, it's going to evolve over time and that's not just this room, that will be sort of the building as a whole. And we're still, uh, working on a TBD date for a really more grand opening, which will be really the occasion where we can celebrate and sort of we've worked out the kinks and we're ready to rock and roll, so to speak. Although we're kind of already doing that. So, uh, one note, um, we did receive, um, a notice that we, our priority site grant application, uh, that we put in on behalf of actually two property owners. One of them received the grant of $75,000 for essentially pre-development funding. Uh, this was the Jakovics site, um, I forget, uh, you know, on Nellin. However, uh, we were told that the funding is in jeopardy due to the state budget situation. So we're going to have to wait and see how that plays out. Other than that, uh, I don't know, um, Councilmember Casissa, if you were going to report on the point in time count, the results did come back as of, I think, yesterday. And, um, okay, because I know you and Councilmember Beckman also participated in this, but.
Can I ask one question related to that last one?
Oh, sure. Uh, did they give a reason why the other one was not accepted? My understanding is it was related to something about, um, EMT, vehicle miles, travel, travel, um, metric and that this, that project might actually increase VNT. But there's some confusion around that, to be honest, uh, because we were, I don't think.
So could it be re, retooled?
We're going to respond to a, a MTCA bag and sort of try to drill into that a little bit more and understand what the, uh, real issue was. Cause their, their informal response to us didn't make a whole lot of sense. Thank you.
Just to clarify, that was the Macy's site.
That was, yes, that's right. That's correct. So I, I do have some information regarding the latest point in time count, uh, for 2024. This is related to actually the homeless homelessness population in Marin County. Yeah. As I mentioned, uh, Councilmember Casissa and Beckman participated in that. And there's actually some good news here, which was, um, good to see, um, at least for Marin, um, but an overall 2.8% decrease in homelessness in Marin County. 24% decrease in individuals experiencing chronic homelessness, which is, uh, important. A 32% decrease in homeless veterans and 12% decrease in homeless families with children. So those are dramatically reduced. We are seeing, because we only have an overall 2.8 decrease in homelessness that you're seeing, again, first time homeless individuals and families being counted now that aren't chronic and hopefully aren't chronic in the future. But, um, at least seems to some stabilization of that number. Again, it's a one, one-time thing, but just wanted to report on that. And there'll be probably more, um, press and, and information coming out on, on that shortly. And that concludes my report.
Sure. So I plead, I approved the police, uh, I mean, so I attended the police, um, commission and approved the budget for the police and also accepted their, uh, labor, uh, organization, like negotiation, right? Or did we accept it like, not officially yet, not officially yet, but we got reports about what it is and it's been included in the budget or at least we understand what the budget impacts will be. And it will be an increase to our overall fiscal budget. It's a, it, it, it's, I wouldn't say a one time, but it's new. It increases above and beyond what, uh, we've been doing before as they try to write and deal with, um, retaining good, good officers, right? In a competitive market and making sure that we can meet staffing needs and, and retain our, uh, experienced, um, officers. So, um, and then I also, uh, sided with the, uh, fire council. There we approved a, a budget also, um, but, um, there was a lot of discussion that the, um, the negotiations with the fire has not been, uh, conducted yet. And so we anticipate that that might need a mid-year adjustment once those numbers come in. Currently we're carrying a 3% as a neutral standpoint, um, was what the point carry was on that, right? Like to the budget, so.
There was also a hundred thousand dollar contingency line item as well added to that.
Yep. Yep. And so, um, uh, our town manager was there and is aware of all these and, and we'll be discussing them as well as it relates to our town budget moving forward. Yeah. And I'll be attending, um, the, uh, Transportation Authority of Marin on behalf of Mayor Beckman on Thursday.
And, um, I also attended the Central Marin Fire Council meeting where we approved budget. And, uh, of course, uh, Wine Wheels and Winning Bids, which was a really fun event. And then, um, on the 16th, the big one, uh, Marin County Community Development Agency. We were awarding the, um, CDGA grants. We, well, basically we made recommendations to the county, uh, to award just over 1.3 million dollars in three categories, uh, housing, capital and public service projects. And I also attended the MCC MC Legislative Committee Meeting, which Pat also attended, which was very interesting with a lot of up, thumbs up and thumbs downs for things we would like the lobbyists to actually push that affect our town. And those are basically where I was in the last two weeks.
Thank you. Uh, May 6th, I attended Marin Wildfire, did a walk around. I was above, it's west end of Seraphel, about, above Mount Ham Cemetery. They're doing a lot of work up there as far as, um, there's a lot of yucalas, yucalitas up there. There's, they carry, carry a high critical area. Um, and one thing, when they do that kind of work, they do work with environmentalists before they even start those projects. And on a weekly basis, they meet with environmentalists, plus also the contractors to make sure everything's in key with that. Uh, May 9th, I attended Central Marin Police Council meeting. Charles already described that. Also on May 9th, uh, before the police council meeting, I attended the Cora Madera Chamber event, which was really well done down Marin Luxury. Uh, May, I'm sorry, that was May, May 15th, I attended a friendly Cora Madera meeting. Um, there Patty kind of mentioned it briefly tonight, but they did their, you know, their survey, they got 804 responses back. Um, and maybe if we can get Patty here at some point in time to give us a presentation. I know she usually comes and gives us like a three-minute under public comment, but I think it'd be worth it for her to come and give a presentation on the, um, survey results. And also on May 16th, I attended Marin Wildfire Prevention Agency Board Meeting. Uh, we approved the budget and we also approved a draft of the work plan. That work plan has numerous projects involved throughout Marin. Um, and that process actually starts in November. It takes them a long time. There's numerous people that are involved with that. Um, and that's it. Thanks.
Fred reminded me, I also attended the, uh, Chamber of Commerce Board Member Meeting. And one of the things they really are now prepping for is the July 4th event. And is always, uh, looking for volunteers and, and, uh, help and discussing some of the logistics involved, uh, with that event, so.
You just reminded me of something else I should report on. So just a couple of things. One, May 10th was the annual Center for Domestic Peace, big luncheon that they do for women and there were like a thousand people there. And the statistics we heard about domestic violence in Marin County were jaw dropping. It truly is the silent crime. They don't get reported because the victims tend not to press charges, but it remains a major activity. Um, I'm sure you hear about it from the police, but the, uh, Center for Domestic Peace provides services and shelter for, uh, people in need. And it's a wonderful organization. And, um, the Lions Club, uh, did, uh, agree to partner with the Beautification Committee to host Oktoberfest. So I think we have a deal there to keep Oktoberfest going. Uh, the Cora Madera Community Foundation will still, um, provide the fiscal responsibility and, and all of that for the event. And the only other thing from the Legislative Committee, we heard that the final budget shortfall was 28 billion in the state and that the housing, some of the housing things were definitely getting cut and schools and healthcare. But you remember we passed Mental Health Proposition 1 in March? It is up and running. So anybody who needs mental health services, just go to mentalhealth.ca.gov and supposedly it's all there. You can find, find help right away, they say. And then the only other thing is on June 11th, RJ Suco will be speaking at the Lions Club. So it would be great to have, you know, maybe a couple of staff members show up and cheer him on. He's not here now, but maybe we can get someone. All right. And that's, that's all I have. And I think discussion of the draft agenda for the next meeting, does anyone have any input on that? If not, then I do believe we can adjourn this first ever meeting. Can we adjourn it in the name of good productive vibes coming into this building for the next 50 years?